Regular meeting for February 26, 2024 at 6:00 PM with a beautiful Michigan day and a lively crowd. If I could get call to order, please.
Mr. Antoine?
Absent with notice.
Absent with notice. Ms. Bonnick is absent with notice. Mr. Connor?
Here.
Dr. Demas?
Here.
Mrs. Ikors?
Here.
I am here. And Mr. Young?
Here.
Wonderful.
If everyone could please join me in doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. If I could please get approval of tonight's agenda?
Support.
Motion by Dr. Demas, support by Mr. Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to our Bulldog Spotlight. Dr. Robinson?
So somehow I think we've got a little bit of spotlight tonight that's brought some energy and guests to help celebrate with us. So we've actually got three different items in our spotlight this evening, so we'll dive in one portion at a time. Mr. Murray, if you could come up to the podium. And Mr. Young, since you're filling in for Mrs. Bonnick, I've got some things for you to meet our Teachers of the Year here at the end of the table.
We have three rock stars here tonight, and I think that's evidenced by the fan club that has joined us. So it's, yeah, we were able to celebrate our Teacher of the Year nominees for each of our levels, the elementary, middle, and high school. We have Krista Miller, who teaches first grade at Indian Hills. All of you are staying for the rest of this meeting, right? Amanda Mazzio from Romeo Middle School. And John Phillips from Romeo High School. Yes. So there were so many outstanding and kind words that were shared about all three of these folks and made really their nomination and acceptance kind of a slam dunk. Because there was so much, I sifted through what was given to us today and just pulled out one sentence from each of their nomination forms that I think really will tell the story that all of you already know about who they are. For Krista, her pure kindness, empathy, and insight make her an example of what our education system needs and most certainly should and must provide to our children. For Amanda, her valuable contributions to developing young adolescent minds do not go unnoticed by her students and their families. And for John, he works tirelessly for our band students in and outside of the classroom all year round. Whether he is attending band camp or taking students to competitions, he is consistently for students and loyal to them, with four in all caps and two in all caps. So.
So we have this tradition of the row of handshakes and then a picture at the other end. So let's have a round of applause for our three Teachers of the Year.
Now you can take the walk.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So excited.
For those of you who don't know, Amanda is the language acquisition teacher at RMS and John is band everywhere, RMS, Ninth Grade Academy, and the high school.
All right, Indian Hills, do you want to give one more woo-hoo for your teacher? We know that February is CTE Awareness Month, and the Macomb Career and Technical Education Administrators Association has an annual awards reception that was held earlier this month at the ISD, and we have a couple of students that were recognized with CTE Students of the Year awards and also a business partner. So I'll start with our students, Elizabeth Pew and Jade Salvatore. If you could come up, please? So you see a picture from the reception at the Macomb ISD where they got some awesome certificates and proclamations and things like that. We wanted the opportunity to recognize them, allow the board to recognize their achievements. These are two exceptional young ladies who really are cutting across maybe what might be stereotypes with the pathways and the work that they're doing. So we're super proud of you guys. You get the row of handshakes as well. Come on up.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you and congratulations.
As a part of the award ceremony, each district has also allowed the opportunity to recognize a Business Partner of the Year. And we know, we talk a lot about this business because they are the best business partner, I swear, in Macomb County. They do so much for us and ask really nothing in return. So they're really a part of our community, but it's my pleasure tonight to recognize Tom and Krista Barr from TK Mold as our Business Partners of the Year. Come on up.
Is it okay if you talk?
Sure.
I could talk, I could talk, yeah. Yeah, thanks, Dr. Robinson. I just realized I've been calling you Todd all this time. I did a little research and I put the DR in front, so thank you very much. So again, it's our pleasure, it's our passion. We're in manufacturing, and we're located 32 Mile on Powell Road. And our passion is to show what a trade or skilled trade could be, because not everybody grows up wanting to be a mold maker or in a skilled trade. So that's our passion. So this is my wife Krista. It was T in the K. She just had Meneska surgery, so she's a trooper. This is Sam Viviano, who's class of 1986 from Romeo. He's a guy heart prodigy. And this is Owen Piyak, and he is a graduate of 2022, and he is in our apprenticeship program. And this is Johnny Salter. He is one of our engineering, or I'm sorry, CNC manager. And he's, so all three of these guys, gentlemen, have been coming over to the school. And this past week, we've been using the machines to machine our newest project, which is our cellphone holder that was designed by a young lady from the class of 2023, I believe. And so that will be out. Hopefully, we're hoping to shoot and run the mold, I think, end of March, probably early April. But what I do want to thank, though, again, I'll be brief here, but I do want to thank the administration, because it doesn't happen, there's districts, we go to the meetings all the time with the Romeo faculty. Not every community has what you guys have here, and I'll tell you that flat out. So with Dr. Robinson's leadership, Jennifer McFarland's leadership, and Principal Osball, that's Osball, I saw him back there, there's some true leadership here, and they are passionate about what they do, which spills into our passion. I also want to recognize one other person. I know there's already some Teachers of the Year, but a lot of the stuff that we do would not happen without Eva Dawson. So I don't know if you know Eva Dawson at all, but you want to know Eva Dawson. I just, so I did a little bit of research. Just one second, let me embarrass you. Some more. So I did some research, and I was just reading everybody's, if you go on the faculty profile, and, because I want to make sure I have everybody's name right. So, and that's where I found out Dr. Robinson. But you should take a minute and read Eva's profile. She's been, since four years old, she's been a Bulldog. And I just want to read a couple of points. And this is, this is the kind of people that inspire us and inspire the kids. So kids, you got to get to know Eva when you get to the high school. "I have always loved my community. As a people here, have given me numerous opportunities to learn and grow. I love learning, value strong work ethic," I'm getting choked up thinking about this, "believe in giving back and find personal fulfillment in careers. I hope to not only help students launch their futures during and after high school through my classroom, but also to instill these values in them." So she lives in this community, and her last line is, "I am dedicated to this community, and it's success." So again, I want to thank Eva Dawson for everything you do. Without her, there wouldn't be a lot of stuff. So again, that's all I have to say, but I just wanted to make sure I thanked everybody for everything, and we're really proud to be in this community.
All right, let's have you come get some handshakes and a certificate, and we'll get a picture.
Wait, one more thing now.
Well, Mrs. Dawson, no pressure now.
Thank you very much.
Our last spotlight tonight, Eva Dawson, high school teacher is here, and she's got some, just a neat update on some of the work-based learning opportunities we have going on in the high school. Take it away.
So Romeo has something called work-based learning. It used to be called co-op, but this is an amazing program that gives kids the opportunity to do what they're doing in the classroom and then apply it at work. And I actually have three fantastic representatives with me today, one from each academy. And this basically, can I sit up here? Move? Nope. All right. You know, I have this fancy PowerPoint. It's not very exciting here, but really, you know, what CTE, what the work-based learning does, it gives these kids the hands-on experience. They're doing the stuff in the classroom, and then they sign out of school, and they go and they do it at work. They are practicing those skills. They're learning more skills than we can even teach them in the classroom. They're coming to the classroom and teaching us what we can do to better our programs. And they're getting true relevance in it. They're doing everything, I mean, because it's work, you know, this is real stuff. So it's really helping the kids expand their knowledge and their technical expertise. Next slide. So a little overview. We have kids from, actually, in fact, my three students could come with me, because I'd much rather have you see them than me. We have three academies, as you guys know. We have the DEM Academy, where we have kids in the architecture and the engineering and manufacturing, in the construction fields. We have students in the HHP. One of our students here, she actually works at Corwell, at Beaumont. They're working at healthcare facilities around here. BEI, Allison, who's also, she works for Lombardo. She's applying those skills that she's learning in the classroom at work. We have kids working in marketing. We have kids working on social media accounts. It's really an awesome opportunity. Next slide. A couple of things, some success. This is really neat. We have kids that are actually coming up with actual solutions. We had a student come up with a design for an actual part on a machine that needed to be fixed. We have examples of kids growing confidence. They're actually starting to run some of the meetings at their companies. And then industry recognition, and they're getting accolades from their business partners. One of these students here, Liz, she works at an architectural firm. They actually told me at her last review that they said that she is better than any college student that they've had there. And so it really shows the testament to their hard work every day that they put in. Next slide, please. Some of the benefits, you know, this is a no-brainer. The kids that are doing this work-based learning after they leave high school, after these careers here, you know, they obviously, they have a higher risk, or higher risk, higher increase of employment. They improved their workplace readiness, and obviously, they have higher than average starting salaries, because they're not starting it from the bottom. Next slide, please. And also, it's not just us. It's not just us, the teachers here. You know, they have a lot of great mentors. We have a lot of great business partners here at Romeo. So these business partners are, they understand that they're kids, and they're actually giving them the opportunity to learn and grow, and they're, you know, dedicated to basically train them to be, you know, highly skilled. They're sending the kids to training and workshops. They're making partnerships. These kids are making connections every day when they go to work. Also, you know, the teachers that oversee the work-based learning, those teachers, you know, they provide guidance. Sometimes the kid might come to the teacher, and, you know, they thought they messed up at work, and they're really afraid to go back to work the next day. And so those work-based learning teachers, they're able to talk to them and give them a little bit of advice on how they should approach those situations. They're developing skills, and obviously, these students are getting a lot of great opportunities. Next slide, please. Oh, this is the old slide. I removed that. Well, basically, what I wanted to conclude was that basically, you know, these kids are going in, there's a rising demand for work-based learning. We started the program, it was about, or we didn't start it, but about two years ago, I think we were about eight kids. Right now, I think we're at 35 kids. So the demand is increasing. Businesses are hearing about it. Kids are understanding it a little bit more, and so they're actively searching jobs that they can apply for their work-based learning. It's helping us align in our career classes with businesses. It's being a little bit more deliberate and specific in how we work with our industry partners, and it truly is giving a lot of empowerment to these students. I absolutely love it when the kids come in at work-based learning, and they learn something at their job, and then they translate it and actually apply it in the classroom and teach me and the rest of the students in the class. So I want to thank these wonderful people. They are wonderful examples of some of our work-based learning students that we have. So thank you very much.
Can we hear from the students?
Yes, please.
All right. Make sure you introduce yourself.
Hi, I am Allison Wineski. I'm currently a senior at Romeo High School. I'm in the Business Academy studying accounting, marketing, and entrepreneurship. In August of 2022, I was offered a fantastic internship opportunity at Lombardo Homes. For the past two years, I have been using Lombardo Homes as my work-based learning placement. Every day, I leave before 7th and 8th hour and head to their main office. There, I am part of the accounts payable team. Throughout each afternoon, I handle various tasks, including processing and distributing all incoming mail, processing utility invoices for approval, working on check vouchers and insurance, answering and directing phone calls, and assisting with special tasks as needed. I'm very thankful for this job, and it is paving my way towards my future success. I have learned a lot of new skills in the finance field and have also improved many skills that have helped me grow into the person I am today. I have learned and developed better teamwork, communication, time management, problem-solving, and adaptability skills. I feel that doing work-based learning has put me a step ahead. I now know what it is like to work in an office, what is expected, and how to handle certain types of situations. This experience has assisted me in identifying my future goals and possibly the field I want to study and pursue in, which is finance. Here at Romeo, one of my classes is accounting, too. And one of the main things we have worked on so far this year is getting certified in QuickBooks. This has been a great experience, because QuickBooks is the number-one program accountants use. One of the ways we use this program is, AnSquare, is to analyze the school store sales. Overall, this experience has been an incredible learning opportunity that continues me down my career path, and I'm very thankful.
Good afternoon. My name is Allison Chayner, and I'm currently a senior at Romeo High School. I'm super thankful I'm able to talk more about what work-based learning is about and the opportunities, knowledge, training, and experience that I've gotten from being a part of the program. I'm working in the inpatient pharmacy at Coral Health, also known as Troy Beaumont. Since I've started, I've learned a lot more about the pharmaceutical side of medicine and the many different ways you can treat various illnesses. Some of the tests I do daily are restocks, credits, answering calls, medication deliveries, and measuring out orals and liquids. Doing these things has taught me the brand names of common drugs and the uses of them, along with learning how to label and track some of the more important drugs. Along with daily tests, sometimes I get to crush medications and create liquid, like, med, I guess, through tablets. Through the field study class, it teaches us, like, basic care of patients, how to change the bed and, like, change beds, change diapers, stuff like that. And we actually go out and do that. I do that in the morning. And though that teaches us about more patient care, this has taught me a lot about the medicine side of healthcare. This allows me to be a better caretaker in all aspects. Along with the hands-on skills that I've been taught, I've learned a lot on how to communicate with others, how to act in a professional environment, and how to be a responsible employee. Because I am working in a hospital and delivering medications to many areas, I was able to see all the little parts that make up the field of healthcare. And though I don't work in the emergency room, I'm still able to learn about some of the cool cases and, like, the different things people have come in with. Actually, it was on the news that this guy was trying to kill his mom, and I was actually there when they were, when he was taken to the ER. And I just think that's, like, really cool that I got to experience and see this story, how they treat him. I just think that's, like, something that not everybody gets to see. And my experience in work-based learning has been amazing. However, I don't want to go into pharmacy, but I think that this has given me an opportunity to see what I like in a job and what I don't like, and it's taught me many skills and information that I will continue to use in the future. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Pew. I'm a senior at RHS. I'm in the architecture pathway in DEM. I have got, offered a job at AEW over last summer, and I've been working there from September to now. I've learned about AutoCAD, Revit, and I've learned that in the classroom, and now I get to use it now and use that in class. I work on contract books, spec books, detailed drawings, and ASB builds. So I get to do the real-world stuff. I get to make buildings and then watch them get built. I get to sit in meetings and learn about all the ins and outs of architecture. I really enjoy it, because now that I get to see what all is behind the scenes, and I get to learn, maybe that is what I want to go into, or maybe it's not. I get to learn about architecture and construction. I'm in the construction II class as well. So then I get to learn about how the back of that goes into architecture and how they get to work together. I've learned a lot of team-building skills, how to work with others and work with different companies and contractors, to know what they need as part of a project and what we need to give them. A lot of going into architecture is team-building, so I really like it, and I get to work with different people. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mrs. Dawson and young ladies, thank you for being here to just give us some great examples of work-based learning at Romeo High School, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
All right. Inspiring, to say the least. Thank you.
So to our audience, many of you are here, are guests celebrating. We're going to take maybe, Mr. Young, a five-minute recess, and those that want to say congratulations to their Teacher of the Year or are going to move on with the rest of their evening, we'll allow you the opportunity to do that, and then we'll get back to our meeting.
We will return at 6:28. That was nice. If anyone would like to move closer, there's open seating now.
Mr. Nelson wants some friends.
Front row. Bring your friend. You have to bring all your friends. I want to see people. I can't see you guys back there. No, then I want you to sit up front. I want to see your briefcase. Yeah. Well, you know, you don't really know until you know. But this is so cool. This is why I get excited about, you know, because that young lady up there that was talking about the, she was in the ER and the patient and how cool that was, I can, I relate to that. All the cool stories she's going to hear. It's okay. Pick one. What's me to do? Yeah, that's my jam. Maybe she'll want to work in, like, the school store or something. Oh, science. Well, that's medicine. Well, it's medicine-minded mathematics and. Oh, Joe, you're Joe. Oh. Are you going to go?
I can't get anywhere else, though.
Why?
I was just, I'm too hungry. No, you have to have clearance to.
Can we get some pictures of that? A teenager posting their food on.
All right, Mr. Young, I think we're ready.
Okay, we are going to reconvene here.
Thank you, thank you.
Clears out quick. Okay, we are going to move on to presentations after a very nice and thoughtful Bulldog Spotlight. Vicki, Board Budget Amendment presentation.
I just wish I was so exciting as, not even close. Try not to fall asleep now.
Goodness, we're happy to see you.
Well, I'm glad to be here. So I'd like to present the General Fund Budget Amendment for 22, or 23, 24 General Fund Budget. Before I get started, I wanted to clarify a couple of process changes that happened with, that are a little different with this budget presentation. First, the Finance Committee normally has the opportunity to hear this presentation first and ask questions and go over it. That didn't happen because I wasn't available, and so this is the first time that everybody's going to hear the budget presentation. So I just wanted to clarify that. And secondly, we typically wait on the budget amendment until three things happen. First of all, there's three variables. First, we wait for the audit to come through, so we know what our starting fund balance is going to be from the prior year. Second, we know for certain what our foundation allowance is. That happens, has to happen by September 30th, because that's when the state budget has to be adopted, so we know that. And the third thing is, we have our fall count, so that's also happened. So those three things happened, however, we didn't do a budget amendment till now, because the state's been very slow to get us the funding into our pockets and the funding figured out on exactly the allocations we're going to get. So it did take a little bit of time, and I'm going to talk to you about one revenue source that, our revenue funds that we are still waiting on the particulars for. So I'll talk about that in just a minute. So if we want to look back to the ending of 22, 23, we had our revenue, total revenue of $74 million and expenditures of $70.8 million, and that led us to a net increase in fund balance of $3,184,101. So if we added that to our fund balance that was on July 22nd, we end the year 2023 with a fund balance of $12,352,950, or 17.44%. So moving forward. So moving forward with this budget, we estimate that our revenues will be seventy-six point nine million dollars, almost seventy-seven million dollars. Our expenditures, seventy-six point seven. And our revenues over expenditures were two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight oh eight. So that's what we originally budgeted for on June 30th for this year. Just want to make sure I got that clear. Checking our budget assumptions from the beginning of the year. Our original budget assumptions, we had a hundred, we predicted a hundred and twenty-five FTE decrease in our pupil count, and that was because we ended our partnership with Lutheran High North. So that was, we knew that was going to happen and we planned for that. We, projecting that we would have five thousand, one hundred and eighty-three FTEs, comparing it to the twenty-two, twenty-three year of five thousand, three hundred and eight FTEs. On October of twenty-third, October 2023 on our count day, we had actually five thousand, two hundred and eight FTEs. So we increased by more than we thought we would, or decreased by less than we thought we would. Our fall count number is a proportion, is a portion of the blended count that's we use to pay us on our foundation allowance. So using the ninety percent fall count and ten percent of the spring count from the prior year, we increased thirty-nine point five-two FTEs or three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars over our original budget assumptions. So that's a good thing. Our next budget assumption was the per pupil, per pupil increase. We projected that we would get an increase of four hundred and fifty dollars per pupil, going from nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars to ninety-six hundred dollars for a total increase in funding of two point three million dollars. In the amended budget, we're showing that we got actually four hundred and fifty-eight dollars per pupil increase, going from nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars to ninety-six oh eight for two point three million, a little more than two point three million dollars. So that's about difference of about forty-one thousand dollars between our assumptions and our amended budget. So there's some other revenue sources that I want to point out to you. They do come through our state aid. Of twenty-seven I is our educator compensation program. And that is given to us, it's two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. That's given to us to offset any increases in educator pay that we might have this year. At-risk funding also increased by three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars this year. And our thirty-one O social worker funding, we're being funded at thirty-three percent this year. If you might recall, this has been a three-year grant. The first year, the social workers were funded at a hundred percent, two of the social workers we hired. The second year was sixty-seven percent, and this year it's thirty-three percent. So this census is our last year of funding. Our plans are to move the positions fully to the thirty-one AA Student Mental Health Grant to fund those positions. Speaking of that, that is our next grant, and that's five hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five. We deferred that from 2023, so we didn't use the money in 2023. We're using it this year. And that is funding the remaining portion of our social workers and the school nurse and one of our psychologists. Next, we have our twenty-two L district transportation costs. This is new this year. This is six hundred and four thousand, seven hundred dollars. This is intended to reimburse the district for allowable pupil transportation expenses. This is one of the grants that has not been finalized yet. So we're not positive that this will be our allocation, and we may have to make an adjustment in our final budget for this one. They are still working out how to categorize each district based on the number of miles that they transport students and the cost of ridership. Just to put this in perspective, we spend about three point three million dollars in transportation costs annually. So, and that does not include purchasing buses. So this is just a fraction of what we spend on pupil transportation. The pay to participate was suspended by the Board of Education, so that was removed from the budget revenue. We have interest on investments, the higher interest rates, of course, mean higher revenue, so we've got, added that into the budget a little bit more. And then twenty-three G, Buy Kids Back on Track. This is a grant that we will be getting, however, we'll defer it for next year. We can use these funds for small group instructions, such as what's provided by our math interventionists. So it's our intention to use it next year to help us with some of the, some of the ESSER positions that are not going to be funded. This slide is to recap our ESSER funding. We have ESSER one and two both on here. There was a total of two point six million, two point six-six million dollars. And these were to assist students and staff with pandemic-related issues. We're gonna put these in the rearview mirror now. These have all been spent, and we won't be talking about this funding anymore in these two. Except we have ESSER three. We have ESSER three formula and ESSER three equalization. The total of these two grants is five point six million dollars, and we've been spending these funds over three years. The, this year, we've been using the funds for the math interventionists, preventing multi-age classrooms, additional paraprofessional hours, additional portion of, an additional social worker, a portion of our Director of Teaching and Learning, and summer school and after-school programs. Now this, the summer school programs will run after this fiscal year, but as long as we spend the money before September 30th, 2024, we can include those expenditures in our ESSER three formula funding. So after September 30th, we should have zero dollars left in ESSER three formula. Now, ESSER three equalization, which is love and tea, we've also been spending this for the last three years. But this fund, funding is very distinct because it's targeted towards populations of students that are categorized as at-risk students. Special needs, economically disadvantaged, and students that are English-language learners. So we've been consistently using these funds for our English-language learner teachers, counselors, and math interventionists, summer school and after-school tutoring that targets these specific groups of students. Again, the summer school will go beyond our June 30th fiscal year, but as long as we spend the money by September 30th, we can use these funds for those, for those programs. So on the expenditure side, some of the changes that were approved by the board, licensed professional staff salary increases. AFSMI Maintenance Collective Bargaining Agreement was, was approved. The Power School Enrollment and eCollect forms program. And supplies and budgets were increased based on enrollment. And then we always have salary lane changes, which means teachers get higher degrees, so they're compensated appropriately. And insurance elections, those happen every year. So we have those kinds of changes in expenditures. This leads us to the final slide about the amendment. Our revenues are projected to be seventy-six million dollars, expenses seventy-five million dollars. So we expect to add to our fund balance one million, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars for our total fund equity at the end of June to be thirteen million, six hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars, or eighteen point one-five percent. Going forward, we're going to wrap up our ESSER three budgeting. And we'll do some budgeting planning for 2025, so we're gonna be setting priorities, and we'll be talking to the board about that as we go along. We're gonna do, we have contract negotiations with the REA and the RASPER groups this year. And that is the conclusion of the amendment, if you have any questions.
Looks like a positive and very thorough. Thank you, as always.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I thought that was exciting.
Good, you're good. I thought only someone like me gets excited.
Anyone else on the board have a question?
Vicki, is it possible to have your PowerPoint sent to us?
Yeah, I can send that out.
Thank you.
Sure will.
So Vicki, I don't, I don't want to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say buses now, we can do that under the new, what we're looking for tomorrow in the voting, correct?
Should that pass, we will be able to buy buses out of the sinking.
First time, first time ever, right?
Yes, first time, yep.
Okay.
So Vicki, can you talk about, you know, through these federal dollars that we've been, the ESSER journey and that? We've, we've had to book those dollars in our budgeting process, and now those dollars are coming off our books. So that's gonna have an impact on the overall equation of the budget as we look to next year, correct?
Correct. So if we look at what, and we'll talk about what the governor proposes, proposes for the state aid increase. Depending on that number, depending on student count, there are gonna be positions that we have to decide what other sources of funding we want to, to funnel those towards. So, and then that's where the, that's where the administrative leadership team comes in, where they decide which positions have, have really been beneficial to us and which ones we want to keep, keep going on and moving forward with and deciding what sources of funds those are gonna come from. I don't know if that's where you wanted me to go with that, but.
So, you know, the, the equation changes. So where fund balance is, is fluid, consistent within a budget year, and then basically, you know, affirmed by our auditors, the equation will change year to year based on, you know, so we're, we're bringing in dollars through some federal grants for a series of years. Well, those, those grants expire, so those dollars aren't gonna come in. So we're gonna see some different numbers as we move forward in terms of our budget revenue and that. But the, you know, the bottom line is, is, is a couple of you suggested this, this is, this is all good news. And, you know, one of the things that doesn't necessarily always get affirmed is, is, you know, the work that we do to set a preliminary budget. And the, it's kind of disconnected in the state of Michigan that you as a board are, are asked to approve a budget quite often before you really know how much money you're going to get. But you can see our assumptions are, are if not on, they're, they're extremely close to being on. And so so we'll continue that process as we look to our March workshop. We'll have some information, initial information on priorities. And then, you know, ultimately, by the time we get to late June, we'll be going through, you know, the process to approve a, a new preliminary budget. And Vicki, you'll be able, you'll have the opportunity to make a final amendment to the current year budget at that time as well.
Right. At the same time we do it, that, June 30th, before June 30th.
Any other questions for Vicki? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to consent action, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Support.
Motion by Rachel, support by Dr. Demus. All in favor?
Aye.
I should have asked if anyone had questions, sorry. Moving on to informational updates and new business, we're gonna start with communications with Dr. Robinson.
So a couple of things in your packet I don't have on the slide. There was a thank you card that was sent to the board. We do our best to get those to you via email or in your board packets based on timing. I just want to make sure to remind the board that you did receive a communication from the Green Space on Prospect Street Group that kind of updates where their work is at. So I wanted to make sure they, they had a representative had reached out to Mrs. Bonnick, and she advised them to send a communication to the board. So I want to highlight that and make sure if you haven't seen that or read that, please do. We've had also a reach out from the Macomb Intermediate School District in terms of their budget process because their budget timeline is before local school districts, and, and their, their approval is actually in May. So they always offer a date to, for representatives from each of the 21 districts to come and hear their budget presentation. That is April 18th, so we'll, we'll work in the next couple of weeks to get, get someone who will, who plans to represent the district there, and then we also have a backup just in case. But that's April 18th for those two. So that's the communications that, that we have.
Thank you. And I guess if you do have any interesting going, whether you're here or Anita or Mike, just make sure to let Dr. Robinson know that you would like to attend. They're typically pretty thorough, too, with their presentation. And sometimes it's a commitment towards a bond maybe in November or different things that benefit all the school districts in the county. Moving on to committee reports, I'll be doing safety and facilities tonight, so go ahead and kick off with safety. Bear with me. So back in January, I, was this, let's see, yes, January 29th. We had a committee of the whole. It was at the request of some board members. They wanted to give an opportunity for any board member that's not present in those committees to understand safety, some of the great efforts that we do here in the Safety Subcommittee. And I have to say, the presentation and hearing from our district safety team and the prized members of that, it's, it's heartwarming. But moving into some of the details of that committee. Mary Seldon, she's our Director of Special Services, presented an overview of the district behavioral threat assessment process that they use pertaining to situations with students or things that may be acquiring at home. The district uses Sigma Materials and Training Model. It's a research-based model that aligns with the use by the Secret Service of the nation. Key elements were also included that thirty-six staff members and administrators have received formal training in the behavioral threat assessment and monitoring. Ten members of the team have gone through advanced-level training. I'd also like to point out with some of our other programs like Stop the Blade or Advert, we do now have trainers within our district. So when we train our faculty, we, they don't have to be sent off-location or have someone brought in. So that was a really big thing that's happened during this school year and over the summer, getting some of those staff members trained in that. The team meets, the district safety team meets about three times a year to share and align practices throughout the whole district, maintaining consistency amongst all our buildings. Romeo Community Schools also has a dedicated flow chart that uses, is in use for the behavioral threat assessment with fidelity and consistency. We also provide a suicidal and homicidal questionnaire that the staff uses for situations that may warrant it or do not warrant it. So that's always in use. And then, let's see. A lot was covered at the meeting, so please bear with me. I just, I like to really speak on some of these points because the work that happens with this team and ensuring the safety is important. I'd also like to talk about the standard response protocols. Dr. Robinson and team have worked really hard on this as far as working with community partners. And, you know, in case an unfortunate event happens in a building, what does that look like? Where do staff and go, contacting with parents, how to handle those protocols. I'd also like to mention that each classroom has a teacher, office staff, and support staff that use a protocols folder. It's a red folder. And everyone is taught what's in that folder and knows where it is in case of an emergency. I'd also like to mention, one of our RSOs, Officer Bauer, went over basic elements of advert like active violence and the protocol with that. Mr. Emile took the group through a five-standard response protocol, hold, secure, lockdown, evacuation, and shelter. So if something does acquire, making sure all of our staff members know what to do, whether students are in between lunch or they're already stationary in their classroom. Visitor management. The elementary has implemented the Raptor visitors system, and it's underway or still being worked out. We've had this in place with our secondary schools, such as our high school and our middle school, and we have found great success with that. Some board members that are on the Safety Subcommittee were shown how this Raptor system works. It's very thorough. It even includes a picture with the sticker. When someone is coming into the building, they can state purpose, photo of the person, and where they're supposed to be. I'd also like to hit on this one because this has been something Dr. Robinson and team again have been working on multiple years to ensure the full operation of our system two-way radios. So in case, you know, the unfortunate event of last week with cell service going down, our staff has advanced walkie-talkies in simple terms, I guess. In case they need to switch to a channel, and every building leader and who needs to be on that specific channel can contact each other within the district. That's huge. And I'd also like to hit on the Emergency Response Agency collaboration. We continue to have representatives and meet with them, whether it's Fire, EMT, county representatives. And Dr. Robinson sits on multiple of those county-level committees to share thoughts, to grow things, and ensure the safety of the district. I think that's about it, unless anyone else that attended that meeting would like to add something. Okay, moving on to the Curriculum Subcommittee.
Thank you for those very thorough notes on, on safety. I was at that one as well and very pleased at a lot of things that we're doing. So as far as curriculum goes, I'm goes, I'm going to kind of just walk through the notes that you all were already sent. So the, at the top there, the action items that we wanted to move forward were the course guidebook for the high school. And much of the changes there are just reterming and rebranding because of some of the things that came out of the profile of the graduate. If you attended the retreat last March, that was kind of when that was the springboard for that conversation and will continue, I believe, at this year's retreat as well. So new courses that we approved last fall will be added to that guidebook. As far as Romeo Middle School goes, the course guidebooks were listed there and you could have viewed them, but there were no changes. Moving on, we looked at the PD Advisory Committee, talked a little bit about what they do, and looked at the members of that to approve. And that will be on our agenda later for Resolution 16. We went through each level with elementary. Again, we talked about CKLA, looked at some questions about, you know, teacher flexibility. I know whenever you have a new curriculum, sometimes it's hard for teachers to adapt and take all of that in, all the demands that are put on it, especially it's very scripted. So it's important to have flexibility that teachers can make those decisions on the spot in the classroom. So we talked about that. And we were also sent some samples. So if you were on that committee along with me, hopefully you had a chance to look through those. At the secondary level, there are two English curriculums that we are looking at. Hopefully you'll have a chance to dive into those. I've already started looking at some of those. I can pass those books along to you from Mrs. McFarland. And we will discuss that more at our April meeting. We talked a little bit about what the teachers will be doing on the PD day coming up already next week. And just talked a little bit about our, our Virtual Academy. Congratulations to Mr. Minow, who will be retiring. And Ms. Maruka, I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly, will be taking his place. He was a former mentor for the Virtual Academy. And there really, really wasn't too much else discussed at that meeting. So was there any questions?
Thank you. Moving on to facilities. I'm kind of playing multiple hats. So I attended this one as well. We had a facility Subcommittee meeting. And we dived into quite a bit that's happening around the district. It's still impressive to me that we still have the sheer amount of construction and progress that's happening. But first, I want to start with, we had a technology, Mr. Nelson, our Technology Director, presented bid results for classroom technology and additions to Amanda Moore and Washington, along with the STEM classroom renovation. We also touched on the unit trends, DPU. I'm a tech guy myself, but some of this, it gets to an advanced level, and that's why we trust people like Mr. Nelson. But our district network backup system, we're requesting, you know, renewing the cloud backup services. And the subscription is set to expire on the DPU equipment. And it is the desire to align the separate contracts that support the backup services with the backup system and cybersecurity prevention. The system includes replacement equipment, and this is a three-year contract that will be paid out of the regular general fund for the Technology Department. Moving on to the 2021 bond, Group One projects of Indian Hills and Croswell. Mr. Tollis updated the committee on the progress at Indian Hills and Croswell. I asked a brief question because the building at Indian Hills, from my understanding, is enclosed now and that inside work can happen as well as Croswell. And I do recommend while you're driving on Van Dyke, of course, be safe while driving. But if you can pan to the left over by the blue water or the, the water place right there on the car wash, you can now see that visibly beautiful red roof and kind of the fun design of the windows that went into the early childhood center. But in addition, we're working on still with the elevator installation as we're looking at a later date just because of the shipping and some of the logistics. And we're down to the final stages, but waiting on that elevator for Indian Hills. Elementary furniture, this was very fun. Mr. Murray and the great teachers looked at furniture pieces and what we were shown. You know, there, with the cost, we had to kind of evaluate which pieces would be going in, which ones are essential, and which ones really need to be updated at Amanda Moore in Heville. This will include desks that will be installed with glides of casters, meaning fluidity within the classroom. And as we look at the landscape of business and other practical applications, classrooms do have a lot of fluidity in furniture now. And there were some really cool pieces like a robin nest. I didn't even know that was a piece of furniture you can get, but it serves a purpose in the classroom. And can't wait till once it's approved, if we get it approved this evening, what that will look like in the classroom. Group Two projects, Mr. Tollis explained and shared illustrations, construction details for the new robotics edition, as we've talked about this before. But I wanted to put it out there. This is going to be a 4,000-foot expansion on the existing middle schools. So quite an impressive project. This is going to be really diving into what the parking logistics are going to look like as we're trying to stage around it and still maintain a fluidity with the traffic flow. And then we talked about site improvements at Heville, explained Amanda Moore would be similar as far as the Hamilton Parsons project from last year with the added challenge of creating pathways for pedestrians. We want everyone to be safe with that. And construction fencing will soon be up, weather permitting. And then work on the baseball and softball complex has already begun at the high school. So that should be exciting. Plumbing upgrade, this is needed. Mr. Tollis reported that the project is currently out for bid. And Mr. Storm added that we will go through the process of vetting the bids that we will receive until there's further information from the state in April. There may be funding available for this work. So we kind of have to wait and see. Moving on to the sinking fund, we're going to have some summer roofing projects. Mr. Storm informed the committee that the district had six contracts attend the pre-bid meeting. Three were submitted for the summer roofing project, which includes roof replacements for three sections of Amanda Moore, the high school Dem Academy. So that would be, for those who don't remember or new to the district, before we put the addition on the high school, there was an existing building, the Romeo Technology Center. And so we're replacing the roofing on that. Moving on to Romeo Middle School Water Main Project is out for bid as of when the presentation was given. And then from the Director's Report, as far as our custodial services, we extended or we're looking to do the one-year final extension. And under the direction of the new supervisor, we feel that the services are improving. So good to hear. And then I believe that is it. Dr. Robinson, did I miss anything?
No, just, just want to clarify that the furniture replacement is for the two buildings that didn't get furniture last summer because they were under construction. So Hamilton Parsons and Indian Hills classroom furniture, and then those specialty classrooms that are a part of the additions in the work that's going on either currently or in the upcoming summer.
Thank you. And I think that concludes committee reports.
So a couple of things. Mr. Murray and Mrs. McFarland, if you want to come up, we'll hear from Academic Services first.
Thank you. Giving a brief update on what we've been up to at the elementary level. In February 13th, we brought five coaches in from Amplify to work with our teachers on the implementation of CKLA. You know, when you're a novice at something, that's the best time to learn. And so again, brought a coach per building to provide glows and grows, as they called it, to our staff, not only individually, but also collectively. And I must say that our coaches walked away, the coaches walked away thoroughly impressed, which is just a testament to the work that the teachers have been doing and building administrators as well. Lesson pacing, engagement strategies and questioning. And then just overall, our progress to date. I think that one of the coaches had said that we were truly a model of year-one implementation. And another had said that she has gone to districts that have been implemented for three years that haven't made as much progress as, as we had. So I'm very, very proud of the work that we are doing. And again, owe it all to, to our teachers and our building administrators. So we continue to, to move forward and are looking forward to the results that we know we'll get. March 6 Professional Learning, we kind of talked about that a little bit. But basically, the nuts and bolts for the elementary level will be centered around revisiting standards-based assessment and reporting, you know, working to continue to develop the report card that we started last year related to ICAN statements. We made a shift to ICAN statements in ELA, but we want to do that same work in math, science, and social studies. And in addition to revisiting a, or visiting a potential change in scale and/or, or reporting format. So stay tuned on that. We've also started staffing and enrollment projections for 2425. Always a fun process, especially at kindergarten and young fives. And so that work has started and will continue into the springtime. To piggyback on that, our young fives and kindergarten information night is March 19th. So if you know any little person who's ready to come to Romeo Community Schools, let their mom and dad know that they can show and begin the enrollment and registration process.
Thank you.
So our secondary updates are some of our informational nights that we have. Wednesday of this week is going to be the Romeo Middle School Incoming Sixth Grade Parent Information Night. And it begins at 6:30. Our high school incoming ninth grade parent presentation will be on March 12, starting at 6:00 PM. And the incoming 10th grade parents, because it's a little different going from ninth grade to 10th grade, that will start at 7:00 PM. And that'll be at the high school in the auditorium. Some exciting news, Mrs. Maruka is actually already being the supervisor of RVA. And she and I had talked earlier when she was still a mentor about having our Romeo Virtual Academy students understand what's next, what opportunities are out for them. So we met with the K-12 liaison from Macomb Community College last week. And we have a meeting scheduled. It'll be virtual for our RVA kids to find out about dual enrollment, if they're a current ninth, 10th, or 11th grader, and talk about options that Macomb Community College has for our graduating 12th graders in Romeo Virtual. And particularly, some of the certification programs that they have that our kids could have access to. So we're hopeful. We're going to record it so we can make it available to the students afterwards as well. Piggybacking off of that, our high school team, again, met with the K-12 liaison from Macomb Community College. And there's actually going to be a dual enrollment night that Mr. Bezdell will be at Romeo High School in the Commons or the Theater, I'm not quite sure yet, but March 14th at 5:00 PM. So parents are welcome to come to find out more about dual enrollment and the application process of applying to Macomb Community College. Sometimes that can be a hurdle. So he's going to meet with parents about that. March 6 PD, high school will finish up their Kagan Cooperative Learning Structures training with their Day Four on March 6. And the middle school will be revisiting some of the teaming professional development that they had had with our presenter in November, do some work as departments. We have some consultants from the ISD and one in-person and our ELA teachers, it will be a Zoom, to meet with some of our, the four core area departments on March 6. An update, International Academy of Macomb, we had nine students that qualified. Those are current eighth graders going into ninth grade. So those are the number of allotted seats we have. So all nine will be able to go if they so choose. And then Early College of Macomb. So I'm excited to share that we had 29 students qualify.
Wow.
That's more than we've ever had. The largest group we had, I think we had 17 qualify one year. And only, I think, 13 actually wound up enrolling in, in the Early College. But that's the largest group we've had. So some of our communication with the K-12 liaison and, and making sure our kids and parents understand the benefits of Early College of Macomb, I think, has helped. So we're excited about that. That's all I have.
I can't remember the number of seats we technically have, but this exceeds it. And as the board has done for as long as I've been here, if the students qualify, we'll, we'll allow them to attend.
Was that the case with the International Academy as well? Just nine were interested or?
Yeah, nine spots, nine interested. So we're, we're within our seats. For Early College, we're going to allow all the students to attend that want to attend. So there is language in there that you can host a lottery if you want and that, but we'll, we'll allow them to attend.
And just so you know, our current enrollment of Early College, there are currently 14 juniors. We have one lone senior. And then we have four students that are in their 13th year that will get their associate's degree along with their high school diploma.
Is there, is there a quota for Early College?
Quota for?
For number of students that can, can enter the Early College program.
From the ISD, who supervises it, or from our, our lens as a school district?
Well, from our school district. Does, does each school district have a quota?
We, we do not have a, a limit of the number of students that we can send. So that's when Dr. Robinson said, if all 29 want to go, we'll allow all 29 to enroll.
Okay.
They give you protocol, Dr. Demas, to hold a lottery if you should choose because remember the district's paying tuition for these students. We get the full foundation grant and a portion of their schedule for junior, senior year is in Community College courses.
Right, right.
And then those students stay for a fifth year, but they then graduate at that time with their diploma and their associate's degree.
Interesting enough, the, our governor is suggesting a plan to, to fund.
Yeah.
And apparently she didn't, doesn't realize that we already have that program in the, in the Early College program. And that's not an additional burden on the taxpayer because it's, it's the student allowance that allows this to happen, obviously, right?
Did anyone have any more questions for Mr. Murray or Jennifer?
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. Tomorrow is Election Day. I will make another public apology to, your phone is blowing up because you're getting final reminders. You get one, I get four. So, you know, that's, that's just part of campaign, you know. And so I, I am certainly respectful of, you know, how much we've put out. And, and we have many of our, our parents and community members that have already submitted their, their ballots. So we're just making that final push that 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM tomorrow, the polls are open. This is back to traditional precincts. This is different than the consolidated early in-person voting. You, you've heard, you know, in some of the recent messaging, there's a concern, you know, across the county. Those, those districts or municipalities that have local ballot issues on the percentage of absentee ballots that were sent out compared to those that have been returned. So just that final reminder that for our voters that, you know, you may be choosing not to participate in the presidential primary, but there's a local-only ballot option at the polls tomorrow. And you can certainly return your absentee ballot. Do not mail them at this point. They will not get there in time. They need to be returned in person. So I'll make sure that I let the board know. If you're an election watcher, I can also advise you of where the website is. I would anticipate that this isn't as complex as some of our general elections in November. So I think our municipalities will, will turn the results around pretty quickly. And then we'll communicate to staff and, and our parents on, on Wednesday, once we know where we're at. So power of positive thinking as we get into the last 24 hours until the polls close tomorrow at 8:00 PM.
I just want to thank you and your team, Dr. Robinson. The election progress with the variety of podcasts and posting and utilizing the best strategies for today's terms, it was great to see. And I saw a lot of literature. strategies for today's terms, it was great to see, and I saw a lot of literature, the phone calls, but really diving into the podcast and seeing some of the posts. I just wanted to say thank you to the team.
So, despite the frustration of continued announcements, no one wants the election to be over more than Mrs. Brush and myself.
I just, I ran into a voter today at Ray Township Library, and they're talking about this early voting. They thought they could still early vote tomorrow in Washington instead of their own township.
Nope, stopped Sunday.
Yeah, I told them, I stopped Sunday, and you have to go to Ray Township tomorrow. I told them, if you're in Ray Township.
You bet. Not our rules.
No, 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 it's not our rules.
So, I am surprised that, you know, some of the returns that we're seeing, that early in-person was, there was a lot of, you know, a lot of people took advantage of that. And I think that will really pay dividends when we get to November, the volume of people is much higher, to give people the chance to vote prior to election day. As far as the state of the district, you know, I want to thank the board members that were able to come out and our parents. You know, we offered 10 presentations and the opportunity for facility tours. You know, all of our presentations had some interest, some more than others, and we're going to continue to just plan, you know, how we can scale those up and get as much participation as possible. We also know that many of our breakout sessions can be done again. They're not time-sensitive. So, we're not quite sure what that might look like, you know, in the rest of this year, but definitely as we look for the right pocket of time in the fall to have another parent informational night, we want to be able to do that. In terms of our climate survey that we completed in December, we received the initial report last week, so it's about 50 pages in length. So, we're comparing, you know, the 2022 administration of the survey to 2024, and then we're also looking at the most recent results and some new questions in isolation. So, we need a little time to do some district-level review. We'll include an initial kind of recap of that at the March 11 workshop with the Board of Education. There are hundreds of open-ended responses that we'll analyze with the committee of our leadership team. That's going to take us a little longer, but we'll do a summary report of that as well. I anticipate having an executive summary that we'll be able to put out on the district website and share with parents electronically, make it available to the community, probably right after spring break. It's all contingent on getting the open-ended response analysis done to hopefully put those both out at the same time. So, more to come on the climate survey and that report, and we'll take a look at that initially at the workshop in March. Last, and we've talked about budgeting and priorities and that, so our district leadership team has really been at this since we came back from the holidays in January, and we've kind of, every year, this kind of has a little different twist to it. This year, the need to transition some of the positions that we've employed with some of the federal grants and things like that, back to the general fund is kind of the new twist to this one. So, our initial prioritization work really has gone from what I think was originally 41 priorities across our levels and departments, and we've categorized them into some initial categories that will kind of then shift out to the more specialized category names when we work with bringing resolutions to the board. So, we're currently looking at things through current employees and positions and the retention of those, because the grant funding sources are expiring, and we want to keep those. That can be general fund or other grant funding, so that's a category that our team has rated and creates some prioritization to. Those priorities that would require new personnel or new positions, and we've rated those. Things that just require some time and training. So, a lot of times, these are, we set up priority, it could be making sure we allocate professional development time next year to this. And then that last category, we've pulled together some things that are supplies or equipment or materials or programs that we might look to expand or bring in. So, we actually have a leadership team meeting Wednesday afternoon that will consolidate these four categories and do an overall rating, and then we'd be ready to share that information with the board at the March workshop, provide descriptions of what they are, and be able to have some conversation. This year, you know, I think is going to look a little different than last year. You know, last year, we were able to get our priorities through approval by the end of March, because many of those were being funded by different grants and not general fund. I think this year, with what we're hearing just from Lansing and the legislature and getting to an approved budget for next year, I think we'll bring things in some different tiers, but some of those are going to require us to really probably hear more from the state in terms of our allocation for next year. But looking forward to share that information. Appreciate the time and attention of our leadership team. I think this is the fifth time we've done this process. So, each year looks a little different, but we're looking forward to sharing that with the board. That's all for my report.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Moving on to public comment, didn't receive any slips. So, moving on to the regular meeting action items, employee services resolution 15, this is a personnel update. Can I get a motion? Motion by Dr. Demus?
Second.
Second by Rachel. Can I get all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to academic services, services resolution 16, Professional Development Advisory Committee. Can I get a motion?
Support.
Moved and supported. I apologize. Does anyone have questions? I didn't do that on the last one. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to academic services resolution 17, RMS and RHS course guidebooks. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Technology resolution 18, this is what I was referring to earlier, or actually, never mind. Resolution 18, 2024 Group Two Building Construction and Renovation Technology Upgrades. Can I get a motion?
Support.
Support? All in, or questions?
Who supported?
I did.
You did? No.
Missed the fun.
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution, or facilities resolution 19, 2024 Summer Roofing Projects, as I mentioned earlier. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Support.
Motion and supported. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Facilities resolution number 20, elementary furniture replacement, Phase Two. Can I get a motion?
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Building Service Resolution 21, this is for the 2023-2024 General Fund Budget Amendment. Can I get a motion?
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And our final resolution, Technology Resolution 22, Unit Trends Data Protection Unit, DPU for short, I should have just said that maybe? No, just kidding. Renewal and upgrade. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Support.
Any questions on this? All in favor? Aye.
I'm going to pause and make sure Mrs. Rice has all that.
I got it.
You got it?
I did good.
All right. Just wanted to make sure.
Think we broke a record of timing.
Round of applause for our new board secretary.
Good job.
Thank you. Mr. Antoine isn't here next to her, so.
I got it.
I saw some smoke coming from the ground.
I got it. That was very organized this time.
Moving on to board discussion and for the good of the district, board members, did anyone have anything that they would like to mention? Anything fun, good, bad or sad?
I just want to echo TK Mold's sentiments towards Mrs. Dawson. Earlier, she, one of my own children, had her as a teacher and still keeps in contact and has been, she is quite inspiring to her students. So, definitely, when you find an educator like that, you want to hold on to her. I also want to just thank all of our administrators that came out for the state of the district. I know the overall turnout of parents was maybe a little disappointing, but I just, I thank them for giving, you know, a full workday and then being there until eight or nine at night was amazing. The presenters were amazing. We have a lot of great resources that I thank the parents and community members that did come that took advantage of that. So, I hope to repeat some of those, especially some of the ones in particular, that just deal with some really heavy topics that I think are worth getting out to more and more of our parents. So, I hope to repeat some of those in the fall, when maybe, you know, we can have some more engagement, and I have some ideas for that, so hopefully we can revisit that.
Thank you for that. Anyone else?
Okay, I would like to bring up something that's kind of off the cuff, and I was planning on saying it with everyone here, but just with what's happening in the world right now, and I'm not trying to create a sense of panic by any means, but if we look at some of the recent tragedies that have acquired within the last few weeks, that's all you really have to do is look at that. When we had our safety of the whole, I was thoroughly impressed, because this work has been going on for 12-plus years within this district. Our staff are doing everything possible. Our superintendent has been phenomenal by pioneering categories that I didn't even think we could do with safety. But coming, you know, with those soon-to-be budget talks in our March workshop, I would like to see the discussion of hiring another RSO. It is the RSO's Association, so School Resource Officer. It's their recommendation to have an officer for every thousand kids you have, but it really depends on the situation in your district. However, I think there is a need for an additional officer from the county. Washington Township's Board, along with Sebastian Pervetti, the supervisor, has expressed interest in doing another partnership with us, and this, you know, could really alleviate some of that road traffic we see around the elementaries in the morning or after high school, or depending on whatever the needs are. But I think there's a higher need for another officer in the district. I think it's only a resource that our safety team can utilize. On top of, you know, we're dealing with a mental health crisis in this country that we've never seen. Post-COVID numbers for mass shootings in school, let alone, have doubled. That's concerning, because we just had a room filled with students, staff and partners that look at this district as something that they can do, be inspired, be creative, and move this district forward. And it's the job of this board, along with every board across the country right now, to ensure that safety is the top priority and to ensure that there isn't another situation. And I'd like to bring up one thing, and I know, you know, people are on and off about this, but in today's terms, I think we also, in that March workshop, need to discuss metal detectors. You don't worry when your kids are going to a concert in Detroit or going to a, any building or facility. It eases the mind, and with the technology and AI of metal detectors today, it can be a very seamless process with nobody worrying during school hours of the potential. It's none, all of this is saying, all of this is being said very proactively, and it's not saying that we're doing anything bad here. We're propelling in every category. It's just, as a board member, I feel with today's terms and the conditionings that we live in, that we need to increase our policing, increase mental health services for students, and look at the potential for metal detectors. Thank you.
I'll add to that briefly. There is an increase in mental health disparities across the nation, across the world, really. I think focusing on keeping our males and females safe in school is our number one priority, and there's many ways to do that. I won't get into it right now. I think we need to highlight eddest staff, the substitute teachers, and get them trained and avert. If they choose, I do believe we do offer that to them, so I'd like to publicly say, if they want to take advantage of that opportunity, I think we have a training in March, if they so choose. And also, safety ed. I think we need to highlight safety ed in a big way and let parents know that their kids are really safe at school, especially in Romeo. I mean, these people are doing really good work, and I don't know if parents as a whole really understand what they're doing for our kids. So, I'd like to explore maybe giving them a shout-out. But yeah, the health and safety of our kids is the number one priority, and that includes educating them properly.
Anyone else?
I totally agree, and I think there's nothing more important than prevention. We don't want to wait till something happens and then take the necessary action, like some, unfortunately, some districts have done that. So, I think we should do everything possible to protect our teachers and our students.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would just echo that, too. You know, our students are a priority, but our staff that also works there, you know, that schools are a soft target. That's something that I have felt very passionately about in my security work in the past and other organizations, and I, you know, want to keep pushing forward. Your Romeo is doing so many great things. I know when we talk to other people that do trainings and even the business world, they say, you know, man, there's some districts that are really doing nothing, and you guys are doing a lot of great things. So, there definitely is that. I want to just keep pushing forward on some of the things you brought up, Mr. Young, but, you know, just being proactive, I think that's the key that, you know, people have already said it. We can talk about all the things on how to react and what to do afterwards, and those things are important and need to be discussed, but the main thing is to prevent things in the first place. So, I commend that discussion to hopefully keep happening.
All right. Moving on to public comment, do I have anyone? Nope. Anyone want to speak?
Anyone?
Can I get a motion for adjournment, please?
Motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night, everyone.